Hello and welcome to our regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Atascadero. Today is Tuesday, March 4th, and we are starting almost on time, 6:02. I'm going to call to order and Commissioner David, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Yes.
Great.
Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two republics stand on one nation, under the crown, in the hands of liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please. Commissioner Carranza?
Here.
Commissioner David?
Here.
Commissioner Heath?
Here.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Here.
Commissioner Panaccio?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Anderson?
Present.
Chairperson Keane?
Here.
All present. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the agenda.
I mean?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner David?
Yes.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Panaccio?
Yes.
Chairperson Keane?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation. Okay, since we have no public comment, I will close that and we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner David?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Panaccio?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Anderson?
Yes.
Chairperson Keane?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Okay, so for Planning Commission business, I do want to acknowledge that we received the letter from Claudia Berkman. The city is aware of the issue going on with Oak Ridge Estates. An investigation is underway. We have requested some more information from the builder. We just don't have anything further at this moment, but hopefully soon. So I just did want to acknowledge that, that letter, so. We'll move on to our public hearings and it's the amendment to Title IX, Extended Stay Hotels. I'm going to ask each one of you if you've had any ex parte communications. That just means if you've spoken to anyone in regards to this project outside, well, really, anyone, the builder had any private conversations. And to say no is a totally okay thing and to say yes is also okay. Commissioner Carranza, any ex parte?
No ex parte.
Commissioner Panaccio?
No ex parte.
Commissioner David?
No ex parte.
Commissioner Heath?
No ex parte.
Commissioner O'Malley?
No ex parte.
Vice Chair Anderson?
No ex parte.
And no ex parte for me either, so we're ready to be dazzled.
Thank you, commissioners. Let the dazzling begin. So this is an extended occupancy hotel code text amendment to allow some extended stays in some of our existing and any future hotels. It's also termed the pilot program for those hotels. So a little bit of background, hotels and motels are designated commercial uses. They're located in our commercial zone. They are not residential units. They're intended for short-term occupancy and tourism. They're intended to be stays of less than 30 days, 30 days or less. And that comes really from state law and how we collect transient occupancy tax. And so those taxes are collected from those tourism activities. Some of that revenue comes to the city, some of it goes to some of our tourism boards. And that is for marketing of the city and bringing in dollars in a way that we do differently for hotel and motel uses versus residential or other commercial uses into the city. There's a current trend in our hotel industry towards extended stays. I think it happened during COVID. It was probably happening a little bit before COVID. But we do have a lot of workers that are traveling through town, that are doing certain activities in or around the city. We have traveling nurses, we have seasonal contractors, there's some utility workers that come for extended periods of times related to certain projects that are done within our region. Sometimes we have some of our sort of local military bases and our, and those kind of areas that have extended stay persons. And so it's not uncommon for somebody to come to a brand-name hotel rather than an Airbnb because sometimes there's blocks of workers that come for a period of time or it's just sort of a known entity and use those hotel services for more than 30 days. But the city does not generate any tax dollars from those stays per state law. And so we are losing revenue for those stays in a zoning district that is not intended to allow for long-term residential uses. And so we've worked with some of our hoteliers and developed a program that would allow them a certain amount of long-term stays in exchange for a fee that is tacked on to those, those users for that period of time to recoup some of the city revenue costs, understanding that these long-term stays have become vital to the success of some of our hotels and competitiveness with surrounding regions as well. So what we're doing with the proposed text amendments, it's fairly short compared to some of the text amendments that you've seen in the past, but it's really targeted to these extended occupancy stays. So we're adding a definition to clearly define that they are different than a regular hotel, which is completely transient oriented and stays of 30 days or less. And they're vastly different than a multifamily residential unit. So these are a commercial use and a commercial zone that have certain characteristics and certain requirements attached to them. So our code also establishes some of those standards and requirements. Standards for approval of an approval process of an administrative use permit, which allows us to add conditions to a project or look for any sort of uniqueness in that particular hotel where they might need something a little bit different or have some different location requirements. So it allows us a little bit of flexibility as we move through that, although our intent is to treat most hoteliers the same so that we can have consistency throughout. Outline some penalties for violation. We do want to make sure that this is not something that grows in our hotel industry. We do rely heavily on our TOT tax. And so we don't want this to become a major part of their hotel operation. We want this to remain a very minor supplemental part to help them get through some of those seasons where we don't have a lot of tourist activity in town. We're also refining some of our kitchen allowances. So we came to you guys a year ago or so and we started allowing a process. It was, we developed a process to allow full kitchens and hotel rooms because of this trend. But really, we want to make sure that that's linked up with extended stays. We don't want a hotel to have full kitchens and 100% of their rooms and then promise us that nobody's ever going to rent it for more than 30 days because that just doesn't seem to fit together. So we linked those two things together slightly. And then the pilot is actually in, a payment in lieu of tax is what pilot stands for. And so because we have the AUP process, we can require that hoteliers enter into an agreement with the city to have this payment in lieu of transient occupancy tax for some of their longer-term contracts. And there's some stipulations about what that fee might be in the agreement and there's stipulations on how much of their total revenue can be generated from an extended stay to make sure that a majority of the hotel remains short-term tourist-oriented stays. And so all that wrapping up into our resolution for adoption, which staff is recommending this evening, that you guys recommend that the city council move forward with our amendments to Title IX to establish extended stay occupancy hotels and motels as a distinct use and develop standards and requirements for those uses, including entering into a pilot agreement with the city. As always, the commission has a number of alternatives. You can modify any of the standards that are before you and make recommendations on those. You can determine that some more information is needed and send it back to staff on some aspect of the amendment. We can bring you back some additional information. Or you can recommend denial of the proposed code updates. I will say that we have worked hard with our hotel community to come to this agreement after doing some audits and discovering the discrepancy. And so we do feel like these amendments are a compromise between both parties that is in support.
Okay, I have questions.
That's what the slide says.
I know.
Go right ahead.
I know. Okay, so are we currently collecting transient taxes on these extended stays?
No, the state law prohibits us from collecting TOT on stays over 30 days.
Do we collect them for the first 30 days?
Not currently.
Okay, so, okay, well, that answers a few of the questions. Second, so you, you were talking about audits and that's auditing what we expect to get from hotels as opposed to what we actually get from hotels? Or do we like get books and stuff?
Sure, so hotels come in quarterly and submit their taxes. And with that, they are allowed to submit a number of exemption requests or things that they've, they've, there are certain government workers that don't pay certain taxes and things of that nature. And so they submit these quarterly and then cities are able, once every couple of years at the leisure of the city, to do an audit on some of those. And so we kind of randomly chose hotels, looked through all their documentation at a closer level and then realized that there were a lot of exemptions for long-term stays being turned in.
And is that going to be our primary tool for violations, to find violations?
Yes.
Okay, so it would happen every, like, we cycle through, like, one year we do these three hotels, the next year we do these other three hotels, like that?
That's our plan, yes, although they are submitting the documentation. And so at a very basic level, there can be a calculation done every year, but a full audit, we would likely do some every year, but not hit every hotel.
Right, okay, that's, thank you. Anyone else with questions, just raise your hand and I'll give you the mic. Commissioner David?
Currently, could you tell me the total number of hotel beds that we have in the city?
I'm going to invite Terry Banish up. She's our hotel lady.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Terry. I was going to start calculating based on a guess of all the hotels I know of, but if you have an answer, that would be amazing.
Well, total, so I'm Terry Banish. I'm Director of Community Services and Promotions and I know some of you, and also responsible for tourism. So with the hotels that we have, we're looking at basically seven hotels. And as far as the total rooms go, it's about 900 rooms, including short-term rentals. That's total for the hotels we're talking about. I'm going to kind of round up a number of 400, I would say, Phil. What was your number?
I haven't finished my math yet because I was going, I know that the Hilton Home to Suites has 120 rooms.
Yeah.
Spring Hill has about 100, about the same, 120.
Yes.
And then I'm going to look at.
Holiday Inn Express, about.
And then there's the Fairfield that just did the remodel and I don't have their exact number. I thought they were closer to 50. And then we have all these other smaller ones. We got the Vino in downtown, we got the Atascadero in on Moro Road. I'm just calculating these in my head right now.
Carlton.
So Carlton, so 400-ish is, is, is close.
Yeah.
You know, it could be 450.
Yeah.
That's, you know, we don't have an exact number, I'm sorry. And then there's the Vacation Runals, but that's something different.
I will have an exact number for you in about 10 minutes, but I need to go calculate that real quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we know out of all those hotel rooms, and it doesn't have to be exactly, do we know approximately how many of those are actual kitchen units? Like the hotel off Del Rio, Home to, Home to Suites?
Home to Suites only has two kitchens on each floor. There's only about six kitchens total in that whole hotel. I looked at the floor plans just recently to examine that. So most of our hotels do not have the full kitchens. They only have a small percentage of rooms that have these kitchens.
And to stay the 30 days, they do not have to be in a kitchen?
No, you don't have to have a kitchen. And commonly, that's not what's happening. And so folks are eating out in the community and, you know, when they come into a hotel and stay more than 30 days, they, they sign up to do that ahead of time and they get a better price to do that, plus the exemption of TOT right up front. And, you know, it's something for most communities, it's just been off the radar. Communities have not known this is happening and it's a more recent trend. And now we're just basically saying, hey, let's figure this out, let's get our hands around this.
And one last question, do, out of the new projects that are coming online, I know there's a, a small boutique hotel going in down at Dove Creek. Do we have, are we anticipating the newer hotels coming in with kitchen units or one or two?
A lot of these are coming in with kitchens, but also we're putting deed restrictions on all the new hotels that prohibit stays over 30 days. But now with this program, they'd still be able to ask for it. But these hotels that have these kitchens, it's always been a concern of ours that they might be, you know, more inclined to rent long-term, which would omit us from the TOT. But the main thing is, when we approve a hotel, we're approving a commercial project and a commercial property for that intent. We're not approving a residential apartment or residential condo. That's not what these are. These are commercial developments, not intended for long-term stay. So we're trying to, you know, meet this thing in the middle so that these guys can stay solvent and that we can get some control on this whole situation.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Anne?
Mine is more of a theoretical question. When you're talking about a TOT tax and you're talking about, like, just in a regular apartment building, you know, there's no restriction on how long someone can stay in an apartment building. You know, they can move in, leave 35 days later, correct?
Yeah, 35 days later, so it's, it's not a hotel. So, I mean, I suppose somebody could come in and rent, but it's generally a 30-day or more lease. And so those are long-term residential that's not subject to TOT.
Okay, so, so if, is there, and there's a trend for people staying longer in hotels, right? Could they kind of thread the needle and request apartments-style status in these hotels?
There is a concern, not so much from the, the city's concern is a little bit different. There is a concern that per state law, if you stay more than 30 days, you, you get certain tenancy rights. And so those, that, that is currently the risk that hoteliers are taking and that will continue to be the risk that they take.
Okay, okay, and yeah, so there's, there's this solid line between these two. And it's, it's interesting that, you know, I would, I would say the flexibility would be more, you know, to an advantage to the, the person staying rather than these hard lines. So I understand the, the difficulty in collecting tax, but once someone's staying here more than 30 days, they're probably paying a substantial amount of tax in local taxes anyway, so the offset is there. Okay, that, more theoretical than anything else, thank you.
Commissioner Carranza?
Thank you, Chair. My question was around the table 3-2 at the end of the packet with the amendments of what this would look like if we did amend it, in fact, recommended it as such. And it mentions the allowed use and the CUPs required versus the AUPs required. And I just wanted to break down that. I couldn't quite do all the acronym math in my head with the non-residential zones and how that lined up because I noted on the, the other page about the process and it just mentions the administrative use permit, but not conditional use permits, which we would know would come to the Planning Commission, whereas AUPs are something much more simpler for process that don't involve us.
Sure, so the reason that some of those are at full conditional use permits is because regular hotels and motels are at full conditional use permits in those zoning districts. So we didn't want to make an extended stay hotel a simpler process than just a regular hotel.
And CP is Commercial Park?
Commercial Professional.
Commercial Professional, and DC?
Downtown Commercial.
Ah, okay.
We should have a CU zone, Commercial and Professional.
Okay, any other question? Oh, is Beryl Creek, do they have kitchens in the hotel coming into Beryl Creek?
I don't believe that they requested kitchens in that. So prior to our previous kitchen amendment, you could only have them in, in 25% of the rooms and you, and that had to be a special request. I don't believe that they've made any requests and they probably wouldn't until they actually get an operator in. But our, the little hotel in front that wanted to use sort of park model, permanent park model units would have kitchens in multiple units. And then our extended stay that we approved behind the Fairfield has 100% kitchens.
And then the RV Resort Park where they have like trailers and they have a hotel and they have yurts and things like that. I mean, honestly, I can't remember the kitchen situation, but can you sum that up on that one too?
Sure, they did not necessarily request kitchens and they do have a boutique hotel above their commercial as well. They would have to come back through a process if they wanted to do that. We did discuss including RV parks in this extended stay model as well. And our current city position, because there's also additional state laws involved with RV parks, is that we will be deed restricting those to 30-day or less stays and all subject to TOT. But it's something we can explore in the future if something comes in with an additional request that we feel comfortable with.
Okay, perfect. Any thoughts for discussions, any motions? How do you all want to do this? Don't, don't be afraid to speak up.
We'll open up for a public comment before we get there.
Sorry. Okay, I will open it up for public comment. Please step up to the podium and state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Now, comments, thoughts, motions? Come on, come on, don't be afraid.
I appreciated Vice Chair Anderson's comments and the theoreticals, yes.
Commissioner Panaccio, any thoughts? No? Commissioner O'Malley, any thoughts?
My, my questions were asked, Commissioner next to you. So. Commissioner David? Thank you for asking those questions, so I, I think I'm good.
You want to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the, the language.
So they've got it up on the screen and all you have to do is say, I make a motion and then that Planning Commission, blah, blah, and just read that. Yeah, they make it real easy for us.
Got it. I make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt draft resolution recommending the city council adopt a text amendment to Title IX adding extended stay hotel motel as a use modifying definitions and providing standards and a fee for such uses based on findings.
I'll second that motion. Did I, did I stuff on you? Did I say something? Did my mic pop? That was an X, that whole.
I think it was interference or something. Commissioner Panaccio, did you have something you wanted to say?
Okay, we're ready. Okay, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
I feel empowered, yes.
Commissioner David?
Yes.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Panaccio?
Yes.
Chairperson Keane?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
I like to get everybody involved, so y'all are next. Your word count has to be higher than your age. Mm-hmm, yeah, that's going to be the new requirement at the Planning Commission. I'm pretty sure mine exceeds like four times my age, but whatever. I'm very young and I don't talk much. All right, moving on, any Commissioner comments or reports? Commissioner Carranza?
None at this time.
No, anybody have any comments, reports, no? Yes, Commissioner O'Malley?
Well, I just wanted to say I went to the State of the City address and Mr. Dunsmore did an excellent job there. You were, you were shown up a little bit by the zoo, though. That was pretty exciting to get the zoo report. We got, we got new monkeys. It's very exciting, but the State of the City was, was done really well, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I did like the zoo. I had asked if Cynthia could bring a live animal, but it never happened.
I know they have a blue-tongued skink that's very personable. What's his name? Walter, yes, Walter, shout out to Walter, my bud Walter. Okay, Mr. Director, any reports?
Yes, I have a few things to tell you about. And first of all, I'd like to tap into the expertise that we have on this commission. I know we've got a lot of expertise here. And we could use it here at the city for a little more help. We have a design review committee and it typically consists of two city council members, two planning commissioners and one member at large. And we have a vacancy on the planning commission side of things, whereas we have two vacancies, two vacancies. So, design review committee doesn't meet that often because it's, it's kind of rare that we actually pull items through them now because a lot of our development projects are streamlined. But what their charge is, is looking at architecture, looking at neighborhood compatibility, sometimes previewing a project before it goes to the planning commissioner, city council. But mostly they're charged with design. And so you see new, typically larger commercial projects, it's really interesting. And we meet on a Thursday afternoon typically about 2 o'clock. And so I just wanted to kind of poll the commissioners to see if there's any interest in putting your name in the hat. The council asked us to bring this topic up tonight. And we're now accepting applications and resumes for this high-esteem position.
I hear there's 100% bonus to what we get paid to being on the Planning Commission.
Yes, that's a good point.
I actually think Commissioner Heath would be really good on that with his real estate experience, all his real estate experience. And Commissioner David, did you have real estate experience?
No, I have past government experience.
Okay.
City government.
I'm not saying Commissioner Heath has to do it, I'm just saying, I've always wanted to do it, but I have a job and so I can't just leave to be at a meeting at 2 o'clock on a Thursday afternoon. But I encourage you all to be a part of it.
And you guys can think about it and just reach out. I think we have heard from a couple of you that you would be interested or willing and able. But I know our council wants to sort of do appointments, making sure that everybody's had an opportunity that's interested to throw their name in the hat. So just let us know if you would be willing and able to do that.
I basically already told them that I would do it if none of y'all would do it. So please, please do it so I don't have to.
How often does it meet, on average? And you can go ahead and put.
I would say on average about once a month, maybe once every two months is lately the trend.
Okay, I'd be interested.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Heath is interested too.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Otherwise, I do want to let you know that we're going to be bringing the general plan your way on April Fool's Day. But it's not going to be an April Fool's joke, it's going to be the real thing. We do want to get your feedback and kind of give you an update of what we've done so far. We have gone to council a couple of times with it. We've gone out to the public quite a bit with it. But we felt it would, a good idea to bring this team, check in, especially since we have new commissioners. And you'll get to see the kind of draft general plan map and some draft policy documents. And we'll tell you kind of the overview of where it's at, where it's going and what we're doing in the process. So that should be fun. And I can also, if you'd like, right now, give you an update on any of the larger development projects that are happening in the city. And if you have any questions about those, I know you've all seen the downtown construction and you've all had a little frustration with it, but worry not, it's going to be nice. It really, really is. And encourage your friends and your enemies that it's going to be a great project, even if it's frustrating right now for the construction. It's really, I have confidence, it's going to be great. But there's also the other development projects that are happening. The Valley Fresh Center at Del Rio and El Camino is coming along great. New buildings are starting up now. The Valley Fresh itself is, is already doing shelving and interior stuff and so is the distillery over there.
And I'd like to announce that our light is back. People don't realize that we have a working traffic light now, so they're still stopping and going on the reds, which is super fun. So go through the Del Rio, El Camino intersection, look all the ways at all time because some people just.
Ooh, they go on a red?
I didn't just go, but I stopped on a green, so that was.
I, see, I did that too, I did that too, but yeah, people were just turned right through the intersection. I was like, this light is green, so I know your light is red. I, see, I did that too, I did that too, but yeah, people were just turned right through the intersection, I was like, this light is green, so I know your light is red. And it's not blinking, so just be very careful in that intersection, but we have the little yellow arrows and everything, so I just. Cause I did ask about that last time, so I wanted to tell you that I noticed.
Thank you for letting me know, if I was king for a day, or if I was traffic engineer for a day, I would eliminate all the traffic signals in the entire city.
Okay.
And you're looking at me like.
Astronomic.
Why would you do that? It is dramatic, anyway.
Yeah, I, was that a motion, Phil? Do you want us to take that under advisement?
No, please.
I don't think that's in our jurisdiction, thank God.
If our Public Works Director was here, he would kill me.
Yeah, so if you have any questions about developments somewhere where you drive by every day or anything, now's the time to ask, and I know, um, Commissioner Caranza has a question.
Oh, the Beryl Creek project, since we're over that way in our minds, I wanted to ask you, Phil or Kelly, about. Whether we had some timelines on that, and I had heard that it was going well.
It's, it is going well, we did get, um, some plans submitted, not the whole set of plans, but we got what we call the public improvements. On-site improvements as well, um, so they're starting to do their construction work, we don't have any buildings planned out yet. But they did their first actual building submittal, we reviewed it, sent it back their way with a few comments. So we're actually in process with looking at the development plans, which is really cool. Um, so it's possible this year they could start doing something out there, these things take time. And so they're kind of taking their time a little bit with getting everything together, I'm not sure if they have actual tenants and what they have going on, but. They're slowly moving forward, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I remember during the meeting that we were looking at that project, I was very adamant about pocket playground areas. And the fact that in the north side of Atascadero doesn't have any kind of splash pad, whereas the south side does. And I think heat exhaustion is a big issue, and outdoor recreation is a need, especially on the north side. And I remember that the, I think it was the R R M folk, um, that were listening to the comments. And they, they heard the advice, but I'm not sure if it got extended to the, the plans that they're working on, so I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you, and we don't have that level of detail to know whether we have a splash pad yet, but the basic road layout is coming together, and the, the basic lot pattern is coming together. And, um, some of those things, so.
A gal can dream.
Anybody else, any questions? No? Like, you can really ask anything, I must have asked Phil about twenty times about the Taco Bell up by my house on Del Rio, so like. Like, this is your chance to ask anything you want.
You can even ask what's going in the other building next to the Taco Bell.
What is going into the other building next to the Taco Bell?
That's great, you bring that up, funny you ask.
Yeah, it's been on my mind, I just, yeah.
It's actually, uh, an extension of a UCLA medical office, and they're going to, that's going to be, um, an oncology. Um, division of, of their office, so it's gonna be a medical office, which is really cool, I think that's, um, it's a service we need in town, and it's also jobs we need in town.
Um, do we know anything about what's going into the old Kmart or the old Big Lots?
Nothing.
Nothing?
We, in other words, I'm not saying nothing's going in there, but we know nothing yet at this time.
Oh.
And we're very apprehensive about that and working with the property owner as much as we can to, um. Encourage something to happen there, and I know he's working on stuff right now, because Kmart stopped paying their lease last October. And so the pressure is on, let's make it happen.
Yeah.
And we need clothing.
Yeah.
Like anything.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Hoping for that.
Yeah. Okay, all right. If there's nothing further, is there anything else that you want to share with us?
Oh. What I should share with you, um, and I don't know if the council gave you an update on the items they spoke about at strategic planning. I don't think I've spoken with the commission since we did our Friday and Saturday strategic planning discussions. We had four topics that were topics to talk about, one of them was about our public noticing. And they wanted to see our public noticing extended for certain types of projects, like rezoning. What were the other, other topics, Kelly, besides cannabis? There was one, two others, I'm trying to remember. Um, they'll come to me in a moment, so another one was cannabis, they kind of softly voted on three-two to bring cannabis back around. To see if, um, the city could accommodate a retail store in, in town. We already wrote a cannabis, a full cannabis ordinance, um, some years back. That didn't include that particular land use, so that could be added in, so they want to explore that. And then, um. Gosh, what were the other topics? I'm trying to remember.
When was the entertainment zone?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Which I found very.
Commissioner David.
Interesting, I attended, and I found that conversation very interesting.
It is, very, yes.
Could you explain, um, how the city of, or how Atascadero became a open container city? How, how does that happen?
How does that happen? And so a city can decide that by adopting a certain set of findings and working with alcohol beverage control. And some years ago, our city, and I don't know what year this actually happened, we, we adopted our own entertainment zone. Um, and we did an update to that about four years ago, where we adopt a set of findings, uh, to alcohol beverage control. And just basically say, hey, we're gonna allow open containers in our city, um, but open containers cannot leave a business place. That has an alcohol license, you have to buy closed containers, and you can walk into, um, public spaces. And you can consume alcohol in our city, it's very unusual in a city in California to have that, and I don't know that. Cities can continue doing that, but we've had that grandfathered in for many years, as long as I can recall. Um, but the entertainment zone goes one step further, and this is legislation that recently passed. Uh, and the city of San Francisco was the, I'll call it pilot program for this, the starter program for doing that. And really it was designed for when they have big city events, like what we have downtown here, is so that people could. Um, have open containers without having a barrier in, in communities that don't normally have an open container. It also allowed businesses that participate in those events to sell an open container beverage. And leave that business place with that open container, that's the big distinction about what we currently have in place now. So this new legislation allows other cities to adopt ordinances that allow for this entertainment zone. Um, within certain times of day, certain days of the week, within a certain confined area. As long as anyone who participates in that is marked with a wristband or a stamp. And as long as there's limitations that are set forth, uh, that are in agreement between the city and that business owner. And agreement between the city and, and alcohol beverage control. But it comes along with a lot of conditions, things like no glass and no metal containers and a lot of liability as well. And so at this point, the council decided, let's table that discussion for now, especially considering. A business owner came in and spoke about the topic and expressed a lot of concern about it, and, you know. And the points that she brought up were valid, which were, you know, when they sell alcohol, their intent is they want someone to stay in their business. And buy more alcohol and buy food and, and do everything else, and if they just sell a beer to someone and they walk out with it, that's not the intent of their business. So that she expressed that that wouldn't serve her best interests in that scenario. Uh, but we wanted other business owners to come forward and speak about it, and so that we get a balanced discussion, but that didn't happen. And so we might bring this discussion back at some point, but it's not urgent, since the city of Atascadero already has an open container policy. Um, and this might actually give us more, um, cons than it would a benefit. In our community, the way we have it structured now, it might give us more liability and more restrictions. It would possibly help events, uh, and the, you know, the events right now have barriers and barricades and boundaries that are set up. And the businesses such as Tent City Brewery and other places can't really participate in these events, because they can't con-sell open containers. So it might, it might allow for them to do that, and it might allow for us to pull down the barriers and allow for us to be a little more open with that situation. Um, a little more Mardi Gras-like, but, um. We've yet to examine a lot of the significant questions that we have, and ABC hasn't gotten there yet, and this is so new that there's not a lot of. You know, it's not a lot of examples out there, so. That's a good topic, yeah, that was the other one, the other one wasn't that significant, because I can't remember it. So. Anyway, I just wanted to give you an update on those items, in case you hadn't heard from council on the strategic planning session, just items.
One more, one more question, um, the last time we met, um, we were going to schedule a meeting to discuss the Brown Act. And different procedures?
Yes, we are trying to set a time with our legal team when, um. Our other city attorney, um, Dave Fleischman can be here, he wants to be here. The difficulty is he is, is tied up on these Tuesday nights with another city council hearing for another city. So it's gonna have to be a special meeting where we don't meet on a Tuesday night, we've yet to schedule that, we will schedule that, I do want to do that, so thanks for bringing it up. We want to have a training session that focuses on the Brown Act and, and all the topics surrounding that, um. And have a good Q and A study session to do that, so we'll be doing that soon, keep an eye out, Kelly or I will let you know.
And in the meantime, if you do have any questions about the Brown Act or conflicts of interest, you can send them my way, I think I was C C'd on that email with the Brown Act. Um, handbook, so feel free to reach out if you have any questions in that regard. Um, and then, I haven't said this to you guys all, but I have a conflict of interest handbook as well that we can send around, and, uh, if you have any questions, just don't hesitate to ask.
Okay, I think I've kept us here as long as I can, so I'm going to now adjourn our meeting, and, uh, we'll be back on March eighteenth? No, we will not be back on March eighteenth.
I believe our, uh, next hearing with items is April first.
Okay, so we will be back on April first, should be fun.